We call this meeting Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, we're going to welcome everyone who's watching the meeting on G10 television and also a few people that are in attendance tonight. We want to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Mike Lozara, followed by the invocation of our city attorney John Carter. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pause again to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this beautiful day and for your blessings and benefits that you so graciously bestow upon us individually and corporately as the city of Jacksonville. We especially give thanks tonight for the service of Mayor Pro Tem Lozara and Glenn Harkett. Their faithful service has meant so much to this city and to our citizens. They now will move forward into new professional opportunities. We pray that your guidance and direction will be with them. We pray for all of those who are still being affected and suffering from the COVID-19 virus. We pray with the advent of these vaccines that are coming out and us practicing the standards that are given to us as far as standards to go by during this time of pandemic, that this will soon be in the rearview mirror and that we can gather next December without masks and without social distancing. Be with us, Lord, and let your healing power be upon our nation and upon this world. We pray for our military who are serving us here and around the world, for their anxious families, and as always, give guidance and direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please proceed.
Council, next we have the adoption of the agenda. We also, we have a consent item to add also on a Palville Award construction contract. So I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the consent items.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Here or none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have our first section of public comment for this evening. I do have one person signed up for public comment. Is that for this set, this first one here?
Yes.
And?
Stand up on your screen or?
I have one on my sheet here from a Mr. S. Claus from the North Pole.
My understanding is he's currently out with his reindeer. He may be in charge.
Into those reindeer.
I know he'll be joining us at 6:30 though.
I believe you have something.
And council, yes, we had a copy of comments submitted by Mr. Robert Sandy. It's all at your places. Each have a copy and Dr. Woodruff will now read those comments into the record.
The topic has to do with the Ward 3 pending vacant seat. Mr. Sandy writes, "Mayor and city council, I would like to take just a moment of your time to commit, to comment about your discussion regarding the vacant Ward 3 city council seat. As you know, I, Robert Sandy, served on city councils from 1995 to 2002. It was during my tenure, the city, the city councils I served on were faced with the same type of decision before you tonight, not just once, but twice. It was during these two processes, the same questions and concerns some of you have asked at your last meeting, were the same questions and concerns voiced during our discussions so many years back. There is no doubt both processes were time consuming. My phone rung off the hook by those wanting a chance at filling the vacancy, and I listened and considered them all. In the end, it was decided on both occasions that city council had an obligation to appoint individuals to fill the vacancies. My thoughts were if the voting electorate did not agree with our decision on the replacement, then during the next election cycle, they would have the power to keep or remove that individual. My hope is, at the end of your discussion, all of you will agree, council has an obligation to support appointing an individual to fill this seat. Council is made up of both ward and at-large seats, all having the same value when voting on issues affecting our great city. Thank you for your time, Robert Sandy."
Is that the only letter that we've gotten today?
Yes, over here.
We'll move on to item number six on the agenda. It's a Western Regional Sewer System project and I think Wally Hanson will be presenting this item. Oh, I'm sorry. Glance right over. Wally, hold on just a minute.
I would move for the adoption of the minutes and consent items with the addition of the paving contract item. So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. Any further discussion here or none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And mayor, one quick comment. I know the consent agenda, we normally don't discuss it. On Monday, yesterday, we received three very competitive bids for the paving. And the fortunate thing is that the construction environment continues to be very positive. And the opinion of probable cost was about $90,000 more than the low bid. And it's interesting, the three low bids were within $5,000 of the total. So it's a very competitive environment. At one of your former council meetings, when you received the audit, you authorized us to take a million dollars and work on more paving. We're going to look at that contract to determine, can we add additional volumes to it or do we need to go back out for fresh bids? But I will say to you, we are, as your staff, we were surprised, pleasantly surprised at the bids, and we will proceed with getting the contracts. It's not likely that any of that paving will go down though until, you know, January, but we have to watch bad weather. But extremely good news relative to paving. So thank you for letting me comment on that.
Now we'll go to Wally for item number six.
Good evening, mayor, city council. We've talked about this project several times before. Tonight, we'll be asking you for consideration on whether or not we should move forward with the Western Regional Sewer Project. Just a quick overview, the city of Jacksonville collection system is made up of roughly 272 miles of collection or pipes. It collects the sewer and carries it to 46 lift stations spread throughout the city and then to our main pump station and out to our land treatment site. Our land treatment site is 7,500 acres of forest and we irrigate the wastewater, the treated wastewater on the forest through 21,000 sprinklers. This is a picture of what our system looks like. The area in blue is actually city limits and spread throughout the city limits, we have our pipes that collect the wastewater, move it to the pump stations, and then out to the land treatment site. In the area along Piney Green Road, we do have one small area that is within city limits that we collect, send down Piney Green Road to the wastewater treatment plant aboard Camp Lejeune. So we do have some capacity that does go to Camp Lejeune, but the, the majority of our capacity goes through the main pump station and out to the land treatment site. Our wastewater system is made up of eight major basins. The two that we've focused on in previous discussions have been the Henderson and Brookview Basin, and the reason for that is that's where the majority of our development has happened and where we are likely to see the majority of our development in the future. With that, we do have several challenges in that basin. We are taking a large amount of already developed area and moving it through the existing collection system, and it goes to two basins, Henderson and Brookview. And from there, we have to deal with limitations along gravity sewer mains that are along creeks and also within the pump stations themselves. The Western Regional Trunk Sewer is a solution that would completely bypass our existing system and alleviate a lot of the challenges that we already see, as well as provide for future growth. I know you've seen this graphic before, but essentially what we would do is set a new wastewater pump station generally in the Williamsburg plantation area. We already have that site located and have the easement from Mr. Schaefer for that site. And then we would extend a force main out to land app directly. So this would give us a second route from in-city limits to the land application site. And then it would be tied in at the headworks, which does require some adjustments, but those are fairly easy to handle. So we would have two pump stations and two force mains that would send wastewater collected from the city out to the land application site. We would then follow exist, some existing easements and some of existing sewer, gravity sewer main and extend sewer such that we could collect all the way down to Carolina Forest. So that kind of looks like this. The phase one part that you see in blue is everything that this project would collect. So it would essentially collect all of the undeveloped areas of Williamsburg Plantation and then generally north of Western Boulevard, all the way down to Carolina Forest. The area that you see in green would be a, a separate phase with some additional improvements, but that would set us up to go, to collect everything in the commons and around the commons down to Highway 17 North. So this is the area that we've identified with, you know, the capability for major future growth. Some of the challenges that we have in this basin is, you know, I know we've reported over time that we have some existing capacity available. We do have that, but we do have projects like Gateway North and Moore's Barbecue, River of Life Church, the small strip center that's going up near Lowe's Food, that have all built within these two basins and that are beginning to consume some of that available capacity. In 2017, we brought to you this engineer's opinion of cost. Roughly the estimated opinion of cost was $34 million. We have had that updated since our last discussion. I think it was several months ago. The engineer worked to update that and we have a new engineer's opinion of cost of roughly, it ranges from 34.75 million dollars to just under 38 and a half million dollars. And that does include a contingency. The proposed schedule, a, what we would look at is breaking each scope of this project down that I just talked about before into separate contracts and then overlapping them and run some, running some of those concurrently. That would speed up the construction time of the project. It would also break the project into smaller contracts to allow, you know, those firms that couldn't come out and bid a 34, 35 million dollar project right out the gate, but could handle some of the gravity sewer or force main or the station work itself. So it does open it up for greater bids. Doing this does compress the timeline, but as you'll notice, the timeline's still roughly about a three-year project. So even if we started, you know, tomorrow, we would be looking roughly three years before we could send sewer through that system out to the land application site. Some of the reasons that we have looked at moving forward now is that we do have new subdivisions that were, that are coming online. And we have two major ones that are in engineering now, and I'll share those with you in just a moment. I know we've talked about those before. We have some of that existing capacity that's being consumed by projects that have been approved and developed. And there's still some projects out there where we have, you know, out parcels that we will have sewer coming from that have not yet developed. And then, as Dr. Woodruff mentioned earlier tonight, we are getting very competitive construction bids, which is a good contracting environment, coupled with we are seeing very favorable bond and lending rates. And in addition to that, our rate model does include this project. So right now, there are a lot of positives for moving this project forward. There are some concerns if we decide to continue to delay. I know that we talked before about, you know, key with this project really is timing. And we have delayed trying to watch the development community to make sure that we are prepared, but we don't invest too much before it's time. And some of the things that we're seeing is, you know, if, if we let the development get too far down the road, we could be looking at a special order by consent or even worse, moratorium for these two basins. It is possible for the state to step in and say, you know, you've got these identified challenges, we're not letting you move forward until we address those challenges. And in, if you recall, back in the 2005, '06 timeframe, we were under a special order by consent. The difference there is that was for our entire system because of the expansion to the land application site. In addition, you know, we know that the bidding environment and the interest rate climate is good right now. We don't know what it could, what could happen in the future. What I will say is, you know, I think that it does speak a lot about the current climate when you look at our 2017 estimate of 34, just over 34 million dollars, and our range now is roughly from 34 million to 38 million. So we're not so far off of where we were. And I believe that estimate has been updated a couple of times before 2017, and we saw much larger increases. Again, this project does set us up for not just what we're currently seeing, but for the future. With that, the current development plans that we know our consultants are working on are roughly 500 single-family homes, homes on the track that has been annexed. This is right at the intersection of Western Boulevard and Gum Branch Road. It includes roughly 36 acres of commercial at the front along Gum Branch. Parker and Associates is also working on a development of 128 lots out off Ramsey Road. And then we have another development that's likely to go with that, that is 68 lots. So in looking, we're, we're looking at roughly 700 new single-family homes and the 36-plus acres of commercial. So essentially, the possibility of another gateway marketplace right there along Gum Branch Road. The current rate model does include the Western Regional Pump Station. It is based on what we've shown in the capital improvement plan. That, that price was based on the 2017. So it is programmed for a construction cost of roughly 34 million, just over 34 million dollars in our current rate model. The, we have identified for funding in that rate model to be revenue bonds, and it did include the council 2.25% annual increase, and that helps us to continue to fund some of our smaller projects with cash. So instead of borrowing for some of those smaller projects, we're able to, to fund those and, and build those with cash and then bond fund this larger project. With that, we have our current debt outstanding, and I'm going to let Richard take over from here.
Gail does not let me normally do numbers in public, but these are Gail's numbers. You can see your debt on the water and sewer system. We will have a small amount of debt roll off in two years. Looking down the road roughly 10 years away though, you will notice that you will be almost completely out of debt, except for the debt you would incur for this project. As Wally has mentioned, we have very favorable rates. Let's take a minute to talk about that. The first meeting in January, you will see an agenda item of a resolution asking you to approve us refinancing all of the debt that you will come off in '29 and '31. Why is that? Well, our current estimate is that if you refinance the debt that is less than 3% right now, you could look at debt at less than 2%. Now, one percentage point on a single-family home, I don't know that that's worth refinancing. But we still have 10 to 12 years on those larger bonds. 1% can save you an awful lot of money. And of course, we're saving the rate payer. So when you look at this, this is the debt that you're going to have. We would not be in favor, when we talked with you in January, about refinancing this debt. We would not be in favor of extending the life of it. The best thing to do is to get the debt paid as quickly as you possibly can. And even on the new project, we would not recommend anything more than a 20-year debt. Certainly, some cities, some counties, some water and sewer districts, they will go out much longer than 20 years. We would not recommend that to you, and that's not what's built in your, in your rate model. What's built into the rate model is assuming this project and that it would be a 20-year debt. One comment that we would also make, Wally showed you two numbers. Why the range? The engineer has been asked to give us options for redundancy. So for example, if you put two pipes through the swamp, as you know, it will be a long directional bore, then that second pipe will cost you more money. So when we actually get the competitive bids in, we will show you the base bid, and then we will show you add alternates. And one of those add alternates would be putting a second pipe through the Western Passage, as I call it, and through the swamp area. But that's why you see that variation. The base bid though, we were extremely pleased to see that it had only gone up roughly 3/4 of a million dollars in that time period from 17, 2017 up to today. As the manager, I would recommend that you implement the project. You have heard all of the discussions over the years. I have to commend you all on the fact that when we were asking for this four years ago, you said, "Let's continue to wait." The value that has come to the project by your good guidance on that is number one, we're looking at interest rates now that we expect the bonds to come in at less than 2%. You could not have gotten that four or five years ago. Number two, we do now have an extremely competitive construction environment. So again, just those two things from your wisdom of delaying the project. On the other hand, there comes a point where you have to ask, you know, how much longer do we delay? And given the fact that we have some new single-family homes coming online, the capacity is just about eaten up, and given the fact that no one can predict how much longer the construction environment or the interest environment is going to be this favorably, as your manager, I tell you that I recommend this project to you. Gail is in the, is in the A and B. If Gail would please step in as your financial advisor, finance director, I think you also need to hear from Gail how she feels about this. So while she's waiting, do you have any questions that you have of us before we hear Gail's thoughts on this?
Wally, can you, can you talk about the redundancy that this project may offer?
Sure. So the, if I can go back. So what this project will do is intercept some of the wastewater that goes through both of these basins currently. An easy example of that would be, we would divert all of Carolina Forest from going through Henderson Drive Pump Station as it does now, to carrying it out through this new system. A phase three that we have not shown up here is there's actually a preliminary design that we could, or a schematic design that we could connect the main pump station and this project together to actually have redundancy. Now to do that, you know, we're not looking at the size or scope of this project to be able to handle all of the wastewater from the city, but with phase two, what it is designed to do is actually handle all of the dry weather flow from the city. So we have a, a dry weather flow and a wet weather flow, which is your safety factor. It would be designed to handle all the dry weather flow. And what that does is bias time should anything happen at the main pump station or the seven miles of force main that run out to run the land app. And one of the things that worries me or keeps me up at, at night, something eventually is going to happen to the force main. I don't think it's going to be, I, I don't think it's going to be material failure or anything like that, but I can tell you that I have personally driven down the road and seen a boring contractor set up on top of our force main outside of the city. So it, it, it has happened. You know, we, we haven't, we've had some near misses that our staff has caught, but, you know, eventually, that's something that we'll have to deal with. And for an emergency contingency plan at the main pump station, we've calculated that the volume of wastewater in the line at any given time is about 2 million gallons. So if we have a break, we are going to have, you know, up to about 2 million gallons that we're going to have to deal with. So what this project will do initially is actually turn, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, I'm sure I could pull those because we have researched it, but it will actually divert some of the existing wastewater that goes through the main pump station automatically into this new station.
So I think the project is a great project. We've been talking about it for years. The only thing I'll leave you with is, this is a project we've been talking about for years, but the primary scope of the project has always been the emergency redundancy from the main station in the event of an emergency, a catastrophe, being that we're prone to storms here, that we would have a gateway to get that, that sewage out back to the land app. And I think if that's not part of this, or at least a, a main focus of this project, then I think you should relook at it because there's no better time than now, whether it's a, for the lack of a better term, a 10 million more addition, or a 5 million, or two, or. I think if you go back in the history of conversations about that crossover, that has always been our primary goal, to ensure that that redundancy is there because we only have one way to the land app. And in the event of a catastrophe, you have no other options. And I, I just offer that.
And that's a very good comment. The other part though, I would remind you, one of the, one of the analysis that you asked us to do was to say, what would it take to send this through the existing system? And that's an important thing to just comment on very quickly. You could send it through your existing system, but you would have to upgrade lift station after lift station after lift station. This is not, if I may, and this is probably a bad example, but it is Christmas time, so I'm going to use it. The mayor has a pickup truck and he also has a sedan. So when they get ready to carry the Christmas presents down to their twin girls, they could put the Christmas presents in either vehicle. Okay? On the other hand, let's say they only have one vehicle, and the Christmas presents are already loaded, and they find that they need more capacity because now the girls are old enough to have bicycles and all those other things. What do you do? You have to buy a second car. In this case, a great truck, right, mayor?
That's right.
Now, the point I'm making is, I want the public to Now, the point I'm making is, I want the public to understand your current system is almost at full capacity. So the choice is very difficult because the choice is expensive. For the city to grow, and you've seen, you know, these are projects, one of which is inside the city, you are obligated, we as a government are obligated to provide them with sewer. And we're either going to spend our money one way, or we're going to spend it the other. And we think the better way is the way that gives you the maximum flexibility, that gives you more capacity. You know, fortunately, years ago, you and your predecessors made decisions that gave us growth for a long time. And we're back to that intersection again, to make a major financial commitment that isn't about just the 500 or 700 houses you saw. It's literally about the growth of the city for the next, pick a number, 10 years? Something like that. We have the most expensive water anywhere. And the reason why we have it is because for an awfully long period of time, we were able to draw the purest water out of the Black Creek aquifer. But suddenly, we had to spend, what was it, 55?
Forty-seven million.
Forty, okay, let's just say, what, $47 million?
Yes, sir.
On a nanofiltration plant. Fortunately, over time, as, you know, those bonds get paid off, somebody will look back and say, "Wow, that was a great thing." And you're really at that point tonight, is, it's one of those crossroads that no elected official likes to do, and that's to put yourself in debt. But it really is one of those points, and I'm not trying to be dramatic. But it's one of those points in history where, you know, for us to move forward with growth, you know? It's just a project has to happen.
My comments were, the scope of the project, if it costs another four, five, six million dollars to build a bigger pipe or to do that interconnectivity for redundancy, it may be best to do it now as a complete package rather than trying to do it later as you're boring through.
Well, the complete project is not, you can move forward with these five phases. The complete project would be to connect phase two back down to the lift station. So what we would ask is for you to approve moving forward with the project as proposed, but as we're going through the process of getting the final designs, which we already have for this, but get the final designs for the interconnect and go ahead and bid that also. That way, you roll it all into one bond.
That's my thoughts.
Gail, before we ask any other questions, finance, what are your thoughts?
I think the manager put it well. We've had several discussions recently about refinancing these bonds. The, the market is never been better for borrowing money. There's appetite from the banks as well as in the bond market. So we'll be comparing those two options for the refinancing. And I've had, I've been in a couple of conferences this week where the economists are saying they expect these rates to, to start inching up at the end of next year, early '22, so... I don't have a crystal ball that says anything better, but that's what the economists are saying. So I thi, I think from a financial standpoint, this is the time to finance the project.
I mean, Bob, what do you think?
I'm, I'm certainly in favor of what you're proposing, but I, I do want to emphasize the, the, the point that, that Mitchell Lazar has made, that redundancy needs to be part of that long-range planning of this, this project. And so if, if we get assurances, if I have assurances that you are planning some redundancy in this to pump back, so we, we are not putting all of our eggs in one basket, I want to make sure Wally sleeps good at night. So... If, if you can assure me that, that Mr. Hanson is going to sleep good at night, then I, I'm 100% behind this, so...
Whatever your motion is, I will guarantee you that's what this staff will fulfill.
Well, can you answer the question in terms of that piece that's going from, I guess, phase one, or whatever's going across the water, or across the creek, whatever, however you're getting it there, is that going to be designed sufficiently enough for a phase three?
Yes, sir. The, okay.
Is everything being built to support a phase three for a final connection of redundancy?
Yes, sir. The, the way the project's being built is the, the force main will actually be the exact same size of our existing force main. It'll be a 36-inch force main. So it's, force main-wise, it's fully redundant. The, the way the project's designed is, it's essentially a, they've designed it as a unique compartmentalized station. So you build the first half of the station, and it's built so that you build the second half right beside it, and it's connected. And then the third phase that I mentioned, that's not shown up there, is actually a force main and valving that connects the main pump station along, it, it uses mostly existing city streets. The one place that we would have to look at boring would be under Mill Creek. And it, it comes along through existing streets and literally ties the main pump station to this pump station by a force main. So that's mostly valving work at the stations and then piping work in between.
Just, do you have a, just a ballpark of what a phase three might look like?
I do not remember the cost. We could probably pull that because we do have that in, it was schematically designed. You know, it was, it was sketched.
Again, Mayor, I don't want to belabor it, but I think this is something that you could look back in history, and that redundancy conversation has been on the table every single time as part of this project, or a project similar to this in various areas that we've always talked about.
That was what was in the 25-year plan.
Exactly right.
Also clarify this. The, the difference between the roughly $34 million project and the $38 million project, one pipe or two, that's why we, you know, we, we've all been concerned from the beginning that the one pipe that we have that goes under the new river, what happens if something happens to that pipe?
That's exactly right.
And that's why the, one of the bid alternates that we have, and that's why it would get to $38 million, is you could put one pipe in. Maybe the time is to put two pipes in while you have all the equipment and everything there. That gives you real redundancy. But I want to make sure that you understand what Wally just said. I know you did. Wally doesn't sleep well at night. I'm concerned about that, too. But what he is, what he is saying is this. This project, phases one and phase two, does not create the redundancy. It's only phase three that creates the redundancy. So if you authorize us this evening to move forward with the project, what we will also do is proceed so that by, hopefully, the first meeting in January, the second meeting at the latest, we can be back in front of you and say, "To do phase three, here's the additional money." Wally, do you agree with that schedule or not?
Oh, I do. But can I correct one thing? Because Mr. Bittner was the manager at that point. The, the existing force main does have dual force mains under the river. It's actually a 36 that flanges into two 24-inch pipes and goes under the river, and then comes back to a single 36 on the other side. The, the additional money that we've talked about with this project would essentially mirror that same design. We could save money and put a single 36 that goes under the water, under the river. Or we could look at putting two 24-inch. So that's the, that's the difference. Our existing force main does split and have dual 24s under the river.
I would do the same thing. Do, do your redundancy there, and then, and then add phase three as part of the total cost. Because if the bond rating's never been any better, this is a priority project we talked about for years. It's never going to be cheaper than today. So I think it will be easy for the council to look at it and say it's affordable or not at this point.
What would be involved in diverting that flow from the main pump station? I, I know, it's a big question.
So when we looked at this originally, there, we have limited space at the main pump station, so there are construction challenges there. But what we looked at was, it, the, the force main comes out of the main pump station, and there's actually a tie-in point so that we can bypass pump. So anytime that we've had to take the station offline, or if you recall during Hurricane Florence, when we lost power and lost the generator, we hooked up bypass pumps and tied those into the force main that runs directly to land app outside of the station. This project looked at putting valving there and essentially creating a connection over through a, through a force main. So what you would do is close the force main leaving the station that goes to land app and open this pipe, and then it would send it to this new pump station to then send it. Or if something happened with this pump station, you could switch it the opposite direction. So that would be the true redundancy.
Let me give you a different answer. You're going to install a major pipe from right there at Cheney Creek all the way back to Williamsburg.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's, that's what I was looking for. What kind of cost would be associated with that?
We'll get you that cost, and we'll have it by the next meeting.
Question. And this is kind of veering off, but it's dealing with water and sewer. Have we done an analysis to look at the failing infrastructure for some of the old neighborhoods that goes directly to the different homes?
We haven't done a specific analysis that says we have this much failing pipe or anything like that. What we do is track our callouts, and we camera at least 10% of our sewer system each year, and we document that. And then typically, what we do is either program through our inflow and infiltration project, lining of those sewer systems, or we look at where we need point repairs, where we go in and just replace a manhole or replace a short segment of pipe. Or we program a larger project where we go in and actually replace a whole segment and then rebuild the sewer, the water, and the street altogether.
I guess one of my concerns is that, and it's, I know we, this is needed as, as a propose, but I keep thinking about the older neighborhoods, and we talk about doing the street repairs. But I know some of those neighborhoods, they're, they won't be able to get those streets until we start dealing with that issue as well. Correct.
Yes, sir.
Remember, in your operating budget and in the capital budget every year, we have three to four million dollars that we do for that. Now, we don't, and let's take, for example, you know, pick any subdivision, let's take subdivision that you live in. In Belfork Homes, no, we do not have a project that says replace every line in Belfork Homes. On the other hand, we do know that one of your main streets in Belfork is failing, and we know why it's failing, and it's because of the infrastructure under. So that's put in your capital improvement program, and if I'm not mistaken...
That will be a new project that we program for '22.
'22, okay.
Yes, sir.
And of course, the nice thing about the rate model is while we don't identify specific projects, we know that we have to have a significant amount of money to replace these lines. Look at what's happened to us just over the weekend. I mean, my goodness, we haven't had any snow, we haven't had any ice, we haven't had a hurricane, and yet we've had three major breaks to our system, two water and one sewer. Now, in fairness, the sewer system was because somebody flushed something that they really shouldn't have, but, you know, that still costs, still costs a lot of money, so...
But you know, it's just a matter of time where, you know, a storm may come through here and really leave us in a situation that will be hard to deal with.
Well, we came close to that in Florence because I remember we, we were having a hard time getting that, that main pump station back up because of, I guess, a breakdown in communication with Duke Power? Is that, am I remembering that right?
Well, let's just say we had a difficult time getting it.
We had a difficult time getting it back up. All right, that's...
Yeah.
Question. The rate model, 2.25%, what, what's the effect on the average sewer bill?
So about, I'll use my own. Now, I want public disclosure, I do not pay the bills at the house, Gwen does. But every time she gets our bill in, she tells me, "Well, our bill's about $108 this month, and that's for stormwater, sanitation, water and sewer." Now, I believe that our water and sewer bill is, let's just say, $70 to $80 a month. So 2% of that, you know, is one point, is $1.40 to $1.60. Am I close?
Dollar seventy-five.
Dollar seventy-five, okay.
When you're in phase one, was that rate model, or year two, year one, or year two, or what?
Year, year two or three?
Second year, I believe.
Yeah, year two.
I'm sorry, this is year two, yeah.
I was just recalling, we funded, funded the original land application. We saved a lot of money by imposing, before the project was built, a $5 surcharge on everybody's sewer bill for the first couple of years and saved a lot of borrowing money and interest by having that cash available. I guess that option is not open to us at this point.
Wally and I have been talking about different methods of funding it and looking at the entire capital improvement plan over the next few years and which items should be financed. In my opinion, we should go ahead and finance what we can now, save the cash for later when the interest rates are higher. I, I guess you could say you're going to be earning higher interest rates, too, but...
Okay.
So, so as the time gets near and we find out what the real bids are, we'll, we'll be looking more at that.
Tell Gail as a business person. That's why you can't do numbers.
So if you're, if you're going to bring us back phase three information, do we need a decision tonight? Or do you want to just wait and see, come back next, come back after the first of the year?
We'd prefer this evening for you to go ahead and authorize us to proceed with the project as designed with the understanding that we'll bring you back information and ask for a possible addition to the project. But it's whatever you're comfortable with.
I think that would be the motion. Yeah, I think, I feel like that, well, I don't worry so much about Wally sleeping at night. I kind of worry about our ratepayers going to sleep and not being able to sleep at night. You know, if our rates keep creeping up, it's going to, like you said, it's, it's probably as expensive as you can get in North Carolina at this point. Of course, I'm in favor of the project, we talked about it for 10 years. I mean, it started at 20 million when we first heard about it, now it's at 40. We, we have to do something to, to accommodate the growth. But it seems almost unfair to keep burdening our ratepayers if we have, if it's going to be an additional, in addition to what we've already designed. Jerry mentioned the, I think it was $15.
Well, it went in $5 increments.
Okay. But it was sold as this is a temporary addition to your bill, and when this bond gets paid off, we'll take it off the bill. Well, we did take it off the bill and rolled it right into the rate, so it, it never went away.
To pay for the water plant.
Pardon me?
To pay for the water plant.
To pay for the water plant, right, right.
There's always a project that takes its place.
Anyway, I, you know, it's spending money, so I'm always a little hesitant about that. But I, I'm ready to go forward with the phase one, phase two, but to just...
Well, you say that, you'll say that until you have a disaster.
We're going to, that we're going to buy, that's insurance. What you're talking about is insurance. You're trying to buy some type of insurance. And so to say, "I'm going to buy insurance, and I don't know how much it costs," then, then is it?
That's very true.
Is it just peace of mind that we're going to have?
You could have a catastrophe five years from now, and instead of paying 10 million for that recovery, it could be another 30 or 40 million of a must-do recovery.
Well, I remember a comment Councilman Bittner made when we first discussed it, that maybe that we better have more emergency repair supplies or something like, to that effect. I mean, there's two different ways to mitigate potential.
But we've been told that there's no, our particular situation is different because of the amount of miles that we go underneath the water. It's not an above-ground repair.
Well, again, we're, we're in the hypotheticals about all this.
Well, if I could add two things, the, you mentioned the ratepayer. This project is also not just in our, our rate that the customer pays, it's also in our system development fee. So while it's paid back over time, the growth portion related to this project is in that system development fee also. So it's not...
It's paid by development. It's paid by developers.
Correct. So it's not completely borne just by the ratepayer. And then it, it's hard to, you know, if somebody hits the force main, we're going to have to deal with what spills at that location. But the difference is whether or not we can continue the city operating and how much we spill during the time of that repair. And getting material, we keep some materials on hand just in case. But it does take time to set up, to handle what is spilled. So it's not a, it's not a two-hour repair. You know, our, our risk management plan says we're probably looking at a day or better for any type of repair that we would have to do. So it is a significant loss.
How long was the, how long was the force main, or the pump station?
I think it's just under seven miles.
How, how long was this pump station down in Florence?
It was down a total of 18 hours.
But now, in, in fairness, part of the reason why it was down was because the switching gear on our own generator would not work. I mean, we do have the ability to pump whether you have the utility there or not. But I, I do think this... While redundancy is important, and we have talked about redundancy for a long time. In my opinion, this is no longer a project about redundancy. This is a project about your future tax base. This is a project that literally, you know, if we're going to continue to grow in the areas where we're seeing growth, you simply have to have the truck to carry the bicycles to the grandchildren. I mean, it just, it's nice to have the redundancy. And that's why, as your manager, what I would hope you do is that you authorize the project tonight as designed. And then let us bring you back information about the redundancy, and you can decide, as Mr. Thomas is suggesting, that at that point, now we'll add another five to 10 million, or nope, we're not going to. I mean, that's, that's how I think we need to proceed.
I think we, we couldn't move with that.
I'd just make one comment, just so you, just so you remember. The redundancy comments were started by staff. That was not, that was not council's, that was actually staff bringing it back to us. Yeah, so, so just that, just that thought.
That was a, that was an in-depth study that was done on our 25-year plan. And that was one of the primary, I mean, y'all can pull it off the shelves and read it.
Yes, sir.
And you'll find that that was a high priority on our table. So we need a motion on that.
I accept the fact that we're the ones who started the discussion on redundancy. But we're also here tonight talking about, folks, it's now about growth as well as redundancy.
We know. Let's give them authorization to proceed like that. We need a motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to authorize the project Phase One and Phase Two and to explore the refinancing of the existing bonds coupled with the additional revenue needed to complete this project.
And the, and the study of redundancy.
And the study of the redundancy, right.
Second. Any further comment, discussion here and all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Okay. That brings us to item number seven, which is the direction on the pending vacant Ward Three seat. Okay, a couple, well, I'll, I'll start with the discussion. How's that? I know we, we talked about this before in here, and I know Mr. Sandy sent the letter in and talked about a couple of things in there, an obligation the council has. For one thing, I think, I think that, John, you've researched on, on that obligation, that must or shall appoint part of the statute. And also, the other thing is that, you know, I read his letter and I noticed that one of the things with Mr. Sandy too, it was during a period of time when the council terms were two years, and they weren't staggered like they are now. So I don't know if you want to give any weight to that or not. But anyway, I just wanted to bring those two things out. John, you have a?
Yes, sir. The statute says, "A vacancy that occurs in an elective office of a city shall be filled by appointment of the city council." See the word "shall" there. There is no case law that interprets that. So when there's no case law that interprets that, what do we lawyers do? Well, we look at opinions and we look at practice. And I have looked at those, and I'll share those with you tonight. One of the opinions on that was given back in 1988. Let me say that this statute was last amended in 1983. So this opinion was after that. And in that particular opinion by the Attorney General at that time, the question was, "May an elected member of a town council who ceases to reside in the town continue to serve on that town council?" And the answer from the Attorney General was no. It said that the statute that we, is dispositive of the issue. And it says, "When any elected city officer ceases to meet all the qualifications for holding the office, then they have, legal term, ipso facto vacant." That that is automatically vacant by operation of law, if you will. You don't have to really take an action. But the Attorney General goes on to say, "Thus, upon arriving at a determination that an elected town official has removed his residence to another electoral jurisdiction, a town council pursuant to Northland General Statute 16863," that's the one I read to you from, where the word "shall," "may fill the vacancy created by the official's departure." So that's what the Attorney General said. Let me bring something that's even closer home to you. The governor of North Carolina, when there's a vacancy in the office of district judge, this is what it says. "A vacancy in the office of district judge shall be filled for the unexpired term by appointment of the governor." Same language, "shall be filled." As many of you may recall, there was a vacancy, first of all, we had an election back in March of this year. It was between the sitting judge, Judge Tim Smith out of Duplin County, and an attorney here in Jacksonville, County Commissioner William Shanahan. Mr. Shanahan won the election. Mr. Shanahan, when he won it, though, he, of course, were not, he's not even been appointed or not been sworn in yet. That will occur in January of 2021. Judge Smith, however, in May of this year, he resigned. So that spot has been vacant since May until William Shanahan is sworn in in January 2021. So the governor, even though it has the same language "shall," has decided, "I'm not going to take any action." No action is action. And so he has not taken any action, and so that particular slot has been vacant. So again, I, I believe that this is not a legal issue, it is a political issue. It is something the council can decide whether you want to fill the vacancy once it occurs, and it has not occurred yet because Mr. Lazar has not submitted his resignation. He's sitting here and can speak for his ward, and I think he's certainly entitled to do that. But it's totally up to council to either elect to fill it or to not fill it. That's my legal opinion. Thank you. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, discussion?
Just say the same thing I said last time. I mean, we've got a short time, time to serve. We would have to go through a process to even determine. And again, looking at a cost benefit analysis, I don't see, I don't see a lot of benefit except for perhaps that one person. And the cost that we would incur is unknown. We don't know what, what it would cost us. So I'm satisfied with, we have a good group, we've worked together well. And I think we can run through this next year until the election, and then we'll know who, who the constituents would want in there. Otherwise, it's, it's not objective.
I think Ward Three has a lot of representation on council as is, you know. So it's not like they're going to be unrepresented, for sure. Anybody else?
Is Mr. Sandy the only one that has submitted a letter?
Yes.
He's the only one?
We've not asked for a letter, though. I mean...
But he's the only one that has taken the initiative to move forward.
But we've had, there's had been contact made by others individually, obviously.
He's the only one who has put forth a formal letter.
Right, a public, public.
So if we have someone who's put forth the intent that they would like to serve, particularly someone who is coming with experience that have served on the city council, should we not take into consideration a constituent's desire to serve on the city council until an election is held in November? And the city, city constituents themselves can vote into office who they want? I'm just thinking that because we have someone who has put in an intent that they would like to serve, even though we have been an operating council for quite some time and are serving the constituents, I'm just wondering if we need to move forward to allow others in Ward Three that might be interested and serving by a certain date to put in their request or letter of intent? Because we do have an individual that lives in Ward Three, and he is showing interest that he wants to serve. So because he has served previously, has served seven years previously, it's been quite a while since he last served because his tenured in in 2002. What would the backlash for this community if we didn't take into consideration someone's intent that they wanted to serve in a vacancy prior to the November election of next year? I'm thinking about what Mr. Carter said, that although we have been pretty much a unified body to carry out those mandates that are required by us and to represent our constituents at the level that the city needs to, when we have someone who is interested, and Mr. Warden made a very good point the last time we had our conversation. If we have someone who's interested, at some point in time, we are all neophytes. It's the first time that we have ever done something. We're coming in green as a cucumber. We don't have the experience, but through time, we gain the experience. But right now, we have someone who has seven years of experience to the city. And if we chose to leave this seat vacant, what type of backlash would we receive? What type of backlash would the mayor receive? That, are we trying to do something underhanded that is not serving the community? And I know we wouldn't go through that, I know we wouldn't. That, that's not on our agenda. We, we definitely would not do that. But I just wonder if others in the community would see it differently if we didn't at least pursue Mr. Sandy's requests.
So let me ask you, Dr. Washington, are you nominating him for that?
No, 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 I'm just, no, 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 sir. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just having a conversation. I'm just having a conversation. So if there wasn't a letter, if there wasn't a letter of intent, we wouldn't necessarily know if anyone was interesting per se because it would not have been brought out to the forefront, even if someone has had private conversations with others that might be interested. That might be a private conversation that may not ever come to light. But because Mr. Sandy has put forth his letter, and his letter has now been read and it's out there, what responsibility is that now of the council to at least not to entertain his requests?
Mayor? Yes, sir.
As John said, this is, this is really a political decision. But, you know, one of the things that you do hire me for is for good advice and occasionally bad advice. So I'm going to give it to you, and you can decide which it is. I do know from conversations that I've had with several of you that you've been contacted by people other than Mr. Sandy. I also know that none of those people have been given direction other than the fact that council is trying to figure out what they want to do. I do not believe, and I'm just going to say it like it is, I do not believe this evening that you should appoint Mr. Sandy. And let me explain to you why. Because he is the one who has submitted a letter? No. There are others who have contacted you that you know of. I think your options tonight are two. One is the course of action of saying, "We do not want to appoint anyone" because, as Mr. Thomas has correctly said, you're only seven months away from the filing, and come November, you're going to have an election. And that person who is appointed in November by the electorate will then serve one year to finish Mr., or whatever the balance of Mr. Lazar's term is. If, so I think your options are twofold. Number one is to say tonight, "We're not going to appoint anyone. We're going to let the voters decide at the polls." The other is for you to say, "We're going to open it up for anyone who would like to come forth and give us a letter, and we will consider those letters by X date, and at that point, we will appoint someone." But I do not believe that it is appropriate just because Mr. Sandy has taken the formal action, a very correct action, of sending his letter in. Now, you will notice his letter is not a letter that says, "I'm running." His letter is a letter that says, "He believes that you're obligated to fill the position." Your attorney has said tonight what he has said. He does not believe you're obligated to fill. So for what it's worth, you know, I try to stay out of the politics of it, but as your manager, you know, I felt compelled to say those words.
Well, thank you, thank you for your advice.
Appreciate that.
I appreciate it. John?
Mr. Mayor and Council, you cannot appoint someone tonight. I can tell you that. You do not have, you don't have a vacancy.
Yeah, he hasn't resigned.
But we can make a decision.
I think, I think, Dr. Washington, at least, what I would say, council can appoint someone. The other concept, there's two concepts, is that if you appoint someone, that gives them an advantage. They are therefore been serving for X number of months, so therefore they're not on a level playing field when it comes to the election in November of 2021. That's up to council, it's a political decision again, whether they want to take that step or not. And whether or not the people in Ward Three, which I happen to live in, or whether or not they feel, hey, I'm going to be slighted because my seat's going to be vacant for seven or eight months or whatever the calculation is. But anyway, I just wanted to make you aware, you cannot appoint someone tonight.
I was fully aware of that.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make a motion that we leave the seat vacant once Mayor Pro-Tim Lazar resigns. And that we, that we make no appointment.
Do we have a second?
Do we make the appointment? Is that what you said?
That we will leave the vacant.
Until, until the voter election.
The voters.
Right.
All right, I'll, I'll support that, I'll second that.
Any other discussion? With that, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Four to two? Is that what I said? Okay. I mean, three to two, excuse me. God, you can't. So that's the end of that, that's the end of that discussion.
Mr. Mayor, you said three to two, so Mr. Lazar did not vote, is that what I'm?
No, I didn't.
Then he, his vote goes with the, the motion is made, so it would be four to two. Do you agree, Madam Clerk? Okay, thank you. You can't just not vote, you have to. Yes, sir.
It goes with, it goes with the motion.
I thought we taught that, but Raleigh will certainly teach you that.
I'd be glad to vote, I'll, I'll, I'll...
We can do that way.
So it's four, vote of four to two, four yeas, two nays. Mr. Jackson. Dr. Washington?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Jackson, vote nay. All right. So that's, moving on to number eight, we have designation of the NCLM Policy Goals Virtual Voting Delegate. And let me get my thing back up here. Mayor, may I make some comments?
Comments on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Every year, the North Carolina League of Municipalities has a policy goal-setting program. In the past, those have all been held in person. And several of you have attended those meetings in Raleigh. One of the requirements, though, is that the city of Jacksonville, as a member of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, must designate a voting member and a voting alternate. This time, it's virtual voting, which obviously means we won't be going to Raleigh. But we do need this evening for you to appoint or to elect one official member of your council to be the voting delegate and one to be your alternate.
I need one voting member and one alternate.
I'd like to nominate Mayor Sammy Phillips as the voting delegate.
Second. Is there a second, is there a alternate?
Do the nominations be closed?
We need a nomination for the.
The alternate.
I move that Mr. Warden be the alternate.
Mayor Phillips, I move that the nominations be closed and the candidates be accepted by acclamation.
Thank you, Dr. Washington.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, so that brings us to reports, our report section. And I'm gonna jump out here first. I don't use the, the council there first. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go first tonight. I got some reports to do. On December 14th, 2020, Mr. Troy Humphrey will celebrate his 98th birthday. He was born just outside Jacksonville, graduated from Dixon High School. He left home with only $5 in his pocket and ultimately joined the Navy. After serving in World War II, Mr. Humphrey returned to Jacksonville and opened his first business, Troy's Grocery and Market. February of 1947, you can see the photo there of David, his son, with Mr. Humphrey. He also began a home building company, and in 1964, he opened Troy Humphrey Movement and Storage Company, which is still going strong today. Mr. Humphrey has always believed in giving back to his community and has been an outstanding leader in Jacksonville for more than 70 years. I recently had the pleasure of presenting an outstanding citizen award to Mr. Humphrey in a pen for his service to this city. He's a, he's a fine gentleman. And please join me in wishing Mr. Humphrey a healthy and happy 98th birthday.
Fantastic.
Late last week, I was pleased to meet with Chris Phillips, who's the pastor of River of Life Church. Since 2006, the River of Life Church has generously made an annual donation to the city. This donation assists the Recreation and Parks Department to provide scholarships for children to attend recreation programs such as summer camps, after-school programs, and youth sports. The donation from River of Life makes a huge difference in the lives of these children who otherwise might not have the opportunity to participate in these programs. On behalf of the River of Life Church, Pastor Chris presented the city with a check for $12,000 to once again assist the city to provide children with recreational opportunities. Pastor Chris also visited with the children at Northwoods Recreation Center last week, where he was presented with a thank you craft project by the children. Investing in our youth reduces crime and improves academic achievement for students, and the donation from the church helps to accomplish that. The city extends our sincere thanks to the congregation, members of the River of Life Church, for all they have done through the, through the years with these annual donations for the children of this community. Since 2006, the River of Life Church has generously made contributions to the city, the city's recreation program. And again, this year, Pastor Chris Phillips is back with us again. And we have been able to work wonders with this donation that we've been given every year. Now, a lot of kids are being taken care of as far as our programs with the city are concerned. Children that would have never, would have never been able to participate had it not been for this generous contribution. And we can't, we can't say thank you enough to the congregation and the pastor of River of Life Church for what they've done, you know, in making this happen every year. Since 2006, I think you're gonna be visiting one of the recreation centers today. And I believe they're supposed to have some type of, some presentation, some crafts that they want to demonstrate to you. And, and these are some of the same children that your donation, your congregation's generous donation has made possible. I appreciate it. And we see this big check right here, and I'm gonna back away and I'm gonna let you make some comments.
Well, Mr. Mayor and all of our council members from Jacksonville City Council, we take great joy in presenting another Christmas gift, and we've been able to increase it this year in the midst of all of the challenges that everyone's been facing. God's been so good to us. We love God and we love our city. And we're very, very pleased to be able to sow a financial seed into our community, especially one that's gonna produce a harvest in the lives of young children. So we're very thankful to the Lord for placing us here in this community. And we love our, our community, love Onslow County and the people here. And we're looking forward to 2021 being the best year ever. We're gonna make it through COVID. We're gonna make it through 2020. And God's gonna help us and help our city, and we're gonna have a great year. So we wanna bless you and all those who are working in our, in our city government. And we appreciate everything that you've done for us, and it's a pleasure to be able to present this gift to the city.
I have a plaque here that I'd like to present to the River of Life Church for continued support and commitment to the city of Jacksonville and its citizens, and dated November 23rd, 2020. And I can't, again, I can't thank you and your congregation enough for your generosity and your awareness of the community and its needs, and I appreciate it. Pastor Phillips, I thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, you're gonna need to come to the podium.
I would, at this time, like to ask Mayor Pro Tim Lazar if he would join me up here, please. I think I'm gonna cry. We've been together for 15 years. We came on council the same year, 2005. I'm pleased to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Michael Lazar for his service to the city of Jacksonville. Mayor Pro Tim Lazar has served as a member of the city council for 15 years, being first elected to the council in November of 2005. In addition to his service on the city council, he has also served on the Jacksonville Oslo Sports Commission, the Joint Downtown Study Committee, and he currently represents the city on the Oslo Water and Sewer Authority Board of Directors. He is currently serving as a chair of the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority. Mayor Pro Tim Lazar also has served as the chairman of the Transportation Advisory Committee from December 2009 to December 2017. And the city, and the council lays onto the Planning Advisory Board from December 2005 to June 2012. He is currently serving on the Board of Trustees for Coastal Carolina Community College. Mayor Pro Tim Lazar represented the city on a statewide level when he was elected to serve as president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities in October 2017, serving through June of 2019. The league is the organization that represents the interests of cities and their citizens on legislative matters at the state and national levels. For the past two years, he has also served on the Oslo Carteret Craven Oversight Committee for the Dix Crisis Center, as well as the Joint City and County Multipurpose Facility Working Group. On November 3rd, 2020, Mayor Pro Tim Lazar was elected to the North Carolina State Senate to represent District 6, including Onslow and Jones Counties. I'm proud to present Senator-elect Lazar with his 15-year pin from the city, as well as a certificate. And on behalf of the citizens and the council of the city of Jacksonville, I want to thank you so much for the time, the effort, and the diligence that you put in for the citizens and the people you serve here in Jacksonville. And your, your work is just, it's just hard to describe how much effort you have put in, your diligence, your devotion to these citizens. Thank you, Mike. Not done yet. I gotta go do something. Anyway. That was the 15-year pin. Now, now we, I wanna present you with a plaque. And I said a lot of this stuff before, you know, but I'm gonna say it again. You know, I've, I have felt blessed and honored to be able to serve with you for the past 15 years. You have taught me a lot about government. I mean, we've, we've made a lot of decisions that have impacted this community and will for a long time, along with our other council members up here. You know, we are, we are a great team. It's bittersweet to see this great team get busted up, but I know that you're gonna do great things for Onslow County, for Jones County, and for the city of Jacksonville and all the other municipalities here. You gotta balance an act that you're gonna have to do up there in Raleigh, I'm sure. But I could think of no one that will better represent our community as well as you. One of the things I'll say, and I read off all of those different things you've done, untiring devotion. You're, you're the, I like to describe you as the Energizer Bunny. You just keep going and going. But that's because your drive, your, your drive, your desire to serve. And again, like I said, I have never worked with a more dedicated and devoted public servant as you, sir. And with that, I will present you with a plaque, and it's, it lists all the different things that you've done. Again, you know, there's a lot of them, but the plaque says, for your leadership to the community in making Jacksonville a better place to live, work, and raise a family, and for your contributions to local government as county, city council member and Mayor Pro Tim. And thank you so much, Mike.
You know, we all think about this day. And it, and we know that it's gonna come sooner or later. And although I'm excited about my new role, this, this is truly bittersweet for me. Because it, it has truly been an honor, an extreme honor to have been an elected official here in the city of Jacksonville, particularly because I love it so much. And, and of course, we are the home of Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, which I have a, a deep connection with. But I'll tell you, it's really not about me. And while all this is, is, is great, and I really will cherish it, it's really about the team and what we've been able to do together. Because one of the things that I learned really early, as you did, we're only as good as the team. And we have been extremely blessed, and I think I've said it in my comments and other, other times, how this city is blessed with such a tremendous team here at the city of Jacksonville. Under Dr. Woodruff's leadership, John Carter, Glenn, and so many of our staff. I mean, we've been through so much here in Onslow County, the many storms, the many obstacles, and many challenges. And we always seem to come out on top. And it's not because of us. I mean, obviously, we can, it's easy for us to take the credit, but it's really not about us. It's about, it's about all of you and the team. And that's what, that's what makes our job easier, and it, it makes our passion even more of a fire. And that's to support our team. And I think we've done that, and I think this city is a wonderful city. And under your, your leadership and this team, it's gonna continue to grow and continue to prosper. It can't help but prosper. And again, it's been, it's, it's been an amazing honor. And I'm looking forward to my next role, starting as a freshman. I get to start all over again. And that's exciting for me. I will work hard, and I will do my job, and I will learn, and I will educate myself. And then one thing I will promise all of you is I will never embarrass you. And that you will be able to look upon me as a person that you can turn to, and I will make it happen for this city, this county, at any time that you need me. I'll be a phone call away, and I will be, I will be here. So thank you again for this wonderful honor. Mayor, I'm gonna miss you. We have been here a long time, and we've, we've been through a lot. And when you start to think about the time that has gone by, we, we have gone through a lot, and that's what it's all about, and I'll never forget it. And I just wanna thank you for the honor that you bestowed upon me this evening. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. At this time, we have a video we would like to show and walk down memory lane.
We have a video.
I wanna leave you with the thought of the positive impact this facility will have in the future. There will be lives saved. If we can just save one life, then it will be all worth it. One life. People will know that others care about them. Our community will benefit. We know this from the positive impact a few people have already accomplished by the power of partnerships. Thank you very much.
Wanna give some of your fellow council members a chance to make some comments? Anyone that wishes to make a comment this time? Be nice.
Bob, you can't speak.
I think the mayor hit the nail on the head. Your diligence and devotion. And I appreciate your wisdom, your, your counsel, your, your thoughts, your positive, just, just, I can. I can see why the citizens were eager to send you to Raleigh. We, uh, we look forward to good things, and I know that you're gonna do a great job for, not only us. I'm, I'm, I'm not concerned, I mean, we're gonna be fine. But there's a lot of folks in North Carolina that other communities need help. And because of your experience, sitting on a city council, and because of your contacts through the League of Municipalities, you're gonna be of great benefit to all the citizens of North Carolina. And there was a article in the day's paper about rural broadband. And I know that's a passion for you. And I know you're gonna help address that when you get up there. And we look forward to you continuing to, to make us proud. I'm glad the Marine Corps brought you our way. We've been blessed because of it. Thank you.
Dr. Washington, you had pulled your mask off. I see you were gonna speak.
Ditto to what Mayor Phillips has said and what Bob has said. You have, um, really championed the cause of Jacksonville, and we are so thankful to have you. I met you 10 years ago when I came to the council, and it doesn't seem like it was 10 years ago. So I wanna thank you for your passion and your drive. But often, I wanna thank you for your integrity. You are a man of your word. You stand by your word, and you implement your word. So when you go to Raleigh, I know that you will represent Eastern North Carolina, where oftentimes our voices are not heard as loudly as the voices from Raleigh, from I-40 and going west. But I thank you that you are going to represent Eastern North Carolina and taking the leadership reins from Senator Harry Brown to continue to be a voice for the people, but in particularly to be a voice for Eastern North Carolina. So God bless you. Know that I wish you the best, and you will be taking the best with you. And every now and then, look back and say hi to Jacksonville because we'll still be rooting you from afar. So God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Father. Appreciate it.
Mike, I, uh, you know, get to thinking about the past, of course. We actually have a kind of a long history and a lot in common. We didn't get along, I don't think, at first that well. We had a little bit of, but we, I think we've both come around. I've come around to what you taught us and explained, and I think you've come around a little bit to me. But, you know, it's really gonna be tough to be up here as I'll be the last car salesman left because you and I, you and I first met at Marine Chevrolet back in the eighties. So, so, yeah, it was, uh, even though, you know, you're not a native, but you're mighty dag on close, I tell you. And I appreciate it, we do appreciate your hard work. Thank you, Mike.
To add to what all, already been said, I appreciate your friendship and your wisdom. And, uh, seeing you work at the League, uh, as well as at the, at the national level. They're not just getting a freshman, not a regular freshman, because you come with so much knowledge and drive and determination. And I know you could never embarrass, uh, Jacksonville. But like Dr. Washington said, you, you would do so much for, you know, not just Jacksonville, but for our state, you know? They're not getting a politician, they're getting a great guy, you know? So I definitely appreciate what you've been, whether it's, like I said, your wisdom or ride home. Thank you.
Well, I've served alongside you for almost 15 years. I think I nominated you as for Mayor Protem, probably more so than anybody. And as I said at last month's Onwassa meeting, your farewell from that position, that, and the mayor's done a great job reading your pedigree. And, uh, you are indeed, I think, the personification of outstanding public and community service. There is a lot of things I could have written after those 15 years, and I was getting ready to write them all down, and I found out I could stick them all on a small piece of paper. I miss you. But then again, I kinda think, and I feel comfortable knowing that down there in Raleigh, we're gonna have a guardian angel looking over our shoulders. So God, God wish you best to the best. Amen.
One major concern, though. I do have, I do have one major concern. Who's, who's gonna be in charge of quality control at the pizza place? And who's gonna know what?
Soon.
Who knows, who knows what a real pizza tastes like?
Richard will let me know.
Yeah, one of the nice things is, uh, up to this point, the city attorney has made sure that the city has not ever paid for a pizza from Lazara's because it's against the law. So now, in addition to the many other delicacies we feed you all, look forward to the quattro, the quattro cheese pizza from Lazara's Pizza parlor.
I'll just have you know, this is what I was really after. I wasn't leaving without my pin, man.
You deserve it.
I'm not sure if it's gold or pewter, but I'm not leaving without it.
Pinoli with the pizza.
Not to shortchange, uh, council members, and I won't hold your comments against you for your report tonight. So if you have anything else to report, anybody? Okay. Mr. Bittner?
Just one thing, because it relates to Mr. Lazara's service on the, uh, Onwassa. It just strikes me as coincidental at last month's meeting on Onwassa. We voted on two major sewer projects. Thank goodness for Camp Lejeune because instead of having Swansboro build a new treatment plant to handle their growth, they're gonna be able to pump that sewage down to Camp, Camp Lejeune, to the treatment plant. And ditto for Holly Ridge.
Significant.
Through the cooperation of Camp Lejeune's officials, we're gonna be able to tie into that sewer line going up 17 and over into Camp Lejeune, and saving a lot of money. So there must be a trend here because tonight, Mr. Lazara voted on those, yes, on those decisions for Onwassa, and he voted yes on more sewer expenses for Jacksonville tonight. So I don't know what that connection is. I'm gonna miss it.
Well, I'll tell you, and you talk about those relationships, saving millions, millions upon millions. And going back in a little history, Mayor Phillips and I were the early birds on Onwassa. And we went through some difficult, very difficult times. And so we've watched Onwassa get to where it is today. And I'll tell you, it's a tremendous benefit to the community, and relationships like what Jerry's talking about have finally come to fruition. Even our relationship with them and the million gallons that we're getting. Some really good things are happening. So that's because of, of, of you guys. So thank you.
Dr. Woodruff?
You know, first of all, I certainly agree. Our relationship with Onwassa is as good as it's ever been. Mr. Hudson is doing an excellent job as a business manager. And we appreciate the guidance that the two of you have certainly rendered. And Mr. Bittner is currently the Chairman of Onwassa. But again, Jeff is to be commended. Have two things this evening. One is a letter of recognition from Representative Greg Murphy, and it's a recognition of Dr. Washington. Says, "Please accept my sincere congratulations on your being reelected to the National League of Cities Board of Directors. On behalf of the North Carolina's third congressional district, I applaud your commitment to improving the well-being of Eastern North Carolina's communities." And then he goes on with some other statements. But Dr. Washington, congratulations, again, for being elected to the Board of Directors. And again, we'd like to present this to you. At this time, John, would you please take that over? In the interest of time, we have one other recognition that we would make. This evening, we're not just saying goodbye to Mr. Lazara, but we're also saying goodbye to a gentleman who's been with the city for a long time, and that's Glenn Hargit. So Glenn, I know you said you didn't want any of this, but guess what? I'm still your boss, and you still have to do what I say. So if you don't mind, come in because we would like to thank you for your years of service. So Glenn, please come in. Now unbeknownst to Glenn, his staff did a video. So Glenn, if you'll stand and join, uh, this is Glenn when he just got out of high school. Glenn has touched many, many activities in this community. Obviously, best known for Christmas cheer. He has been a friend to the veterans. He has been a friend, obviously, to every one of us with the city staff. He has been through hurricanes. He has helped set up all of the various activities at the Memorial Gardens. He turned his back on the Jacksonville police once. You can see, here he is with, with many of the veterans, and here are staff people at the water plant.
He was responsible for the water spray at the water plant.
Well, I actually wasn't gonna mention that, but since you bring it up. But again, here's the call center in one of the hurricanes. Here's recognition of some of our great leaders, and again, setting up for the 9/11 ceremony. Obviously, working with the youth council and the Yellow Ribbon Campaign. What a great, great impact Glenn has had on this community. And at one point, no, he wasn't Santa Claus, but he was the parade master. And here, of course, is Sturgeon City. And then, of course, you can see all of his work. These are the drying beds down at Sturgeon City. This is some of the group for the 9/11 ceremony. Obviously, General Gray, I believe that was, and many of the staff. Of course, the Beirut Memorial, I'm sorry, the Monfer Point Memorial, and of course, the Freedom Fountain. Please join me in thanking Glenn. Glenn, please.
Rule one, never upstage the council and the mayor. So that's not gonna happen. Thank you all. The Mayor Protem used the best words. It's all about team. I've always had a great team. Always had a lot of people that are willing to help do things. I do have to recall that it was on June 6th, 1978, that I sat at this exact location to cover my first meeting of the Jacksonville City Council when I was hired to be the News Director for WJNC. So that was my first experience here. I wanted to come to work for the city because I love this city and, uh, wanted to do something where I could make a difference. And so thank you all for this recognition. I'm not gonna move. I'm, still have the same phone number, and I'm just gonna go eight miles down the road. So thank you all.
And for the public, I want to mention Glenn has been elevated in his professional responsibilities. He's now the Assistant County Manager. I think Sharon is to be commended for her vision of building the county as a government, as well as a community. And I'm confident that Glenn will be a major hand in moving this county forward. I will tell you, as the manager, it has been a pleasure working with Glenn. Also, I can assure you that the bonds that we have on many things will continue, and you will see continued cooperation between the county and the city. But Glenn, personally, thank you. We wish you the best. Merry Christmas to you.
John? I just wanna say thanks to Mr. Lazara and to Glenn. The word that comes in my mind as I think about each and every one of you is sacrifice. Glenn, as you know, is a 60-hour-plus person a week. This city's got that running. Mr. Lazara, you've already gone over all the things that he has done. That comes at a cost. It comes at a price. Each of you sit here tonight when you could be home with your family, your friends. Thank you for your sacrifice. Unless you walk that walk, many people don't understand it. But it truly is a gift of service. Thank you.
Did you say 60 hours?
Glenn certainly, yes, sir, he is.
When I hired him, I expected 65 hours.
He probably, I haven't counted, Mr. Bittner, but I know it's well over 40. You come down here, my turn's Sunday afternoon to pick something up. He's there, he's there. I think this is a great opportunity for Glenn that has come, come along here. But I tell you what, we're not gonna realize how much Glenn did here until he's in his new job and not, not working with the city, or working for the city of Jacksonville anymore. But he's done a, he's done a wonderful job for us. And it's-
Built a good staff, too.
Yes, he does.
With that, Mayor, we wish you and everyone a Merry Christmas. We're going to now, after you adjourn, go down for our virtual Christmas tree lighting down at Riverwalk Park.
We'll have a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor, so you can find us saying aye. All opposed?
Bob, you stay right here.